I'd like to call the Graham County Board of Education regular meeting, August first, two thousand twenty-three to order. Mr. Matheson, would you mind leading the circle, please? Circle.
Good morning, Father. I just want to thank you, your Lord and your Savior, your Lord and your Savior, for our Lord, dear God, and for our Lord and Savior, who has made decisions today, your Lord, with the Lord by you, that have been teaching to our school system, your Lord, and pray as we go through the new school year, dear God, that you would just bless each one of our schools, bless our students, dear God, keep them safe as we go through the year, with our teachers, your Lord, our faculty, and say, dear God, as help them, they make decisions that affect these students every day, dear God, just thank you for everything that you do for us, for letting us live where we live in a community that's so supportive, and the schools, dear God, just pray, your Lord, that you just be with us, keep us safe, dear God, those are all the things, dear God, I just want to thank you, your Son, Jesus, for the blood of Calvary, dear God, and for the opportunity to be saved, your Lord, so Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion for approval of the July tenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Wiggins, has anybody signed up for public comment?
We have no one here for public comment.
Thanks, Ms. Wiggins. Do I have a motion to close public comment? I mean, you have the minutes, they will be.
All right, okay, okay, I just want to mention, for your own.
All right, reports and discussion items. Uh, Mr. Matheson, please.
All right, high school is for a new school year, and uh, we're excited, we got a special morning, thanks for coming on, Tuesday, August fifteenth, six o'clock, uh, next week, I've got, uh, pretty good group of teachers coming in, all of my eight weeks, I have social studies teachers, when you come to the high school, all of us, the seventh and eighth, to start reading, apprenticeship training, it's a two-year professional development opportunity that's brought to us through, uh, RIXA and some other organizations, and, uh, it's, uh, there's really good data out there to support how it helps students develop reading comprehension skills around their curriculum, so it teaches, teaches how to teach reading in science classes, and social studies class, and provide the appropriate, uh, grade level reading material for those students, and how to help them go through and discern of what is asking, what is saying, so, I'm real excited about that, I hope that the, the information that is, will help our English students, for the biology sports, and maybe even our ACPs, uh, in the next few years. In the world of CTE, uh, we're excited to start our agriculture program, I've mentioned that several times, we offer an animal science and horticulture this school year, and, uh, sure, we are a teacher in that, I don't know if you've been by the campus, but we have a barn, legally framed, it is ready for metal, we just ran out of time, so, uh, Mr. Porros' carpentry class is going to start the metal as soon as the school, the school pays back in, they'll give the metal wood on it, and then they'll just get a few kitchen dozzies, handles, and doors, and, uh, a couple of stalls over there at Grant, but, hopefully that'll be finished within just the next couple of months. Uh, Ms. Daniels, currently meeting, being a freshman, to develop four-year plans in the guidance office, we've got Frank Helling on campus today, ready for the kids for fall classes, they'll be there today and tomorrow from nine to two. Uh, we lost Noah Edric as our college vice president, our guidance office, and we weren't able to find a permanent replacement for him, so we worked through, uh, Atlas and State University to try to get someone, and they actually have a young lady, Hannah Collin, who will be coming in as a, in a hybrid position, she'll be on campus four days a week, or four days a month, and then she'll do Zoom meetings with, with those students, and she'll be starting later on, so, uh, uh, we'll, after our committee, she'll get all the paperwork and be approved by the board at the next, at the next board meeting.
There is work to be done on the sidelines also. I mean, there are a lot of them, so. We ordered, over at the God prize, I wonder if, asked the target for, uh, area where the players stand and they probably maybe saw, uh, the rest of it, you know, to get some of that, that's all that has to happen. And you can't, we have tried to sow Bermuda seed several times and we've never got it to take and grow. So you can't really shoot Bermuda seeds, so if it has to be reviewed on a field, off a field surface, you can't just put a basket down there, so. First time we're spreading it all tight, so.
Ms. Waldru, do you have anything for us?
Well, it's just the tech department is very busy. Trying to deal with them ready for the teachers and their coffee. Other than that, no, I'll bring, mentioned the technology, uh, acceptable use policy in a little bit, but it's, uh, opposite, which is very busy. We're good.
Ms. Sun, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, I was here for a good company.
Guess that's everybody. Okay. Request to name Wrestlingville's Mr. Haynes.
I'm nervous, sir. In your, in the photo there, on the left-hand side is the letter, uh, Robbinsville, that's the family that were divided together. And the right-hand side, the letters of support, even give our CSBs, and their more supportive, uh, thing in the wrestling facility, Todd Oden. And the letter on the left, I'm going to read for a while, since we got the, the live stream and, um, make sure that nothing got left out. So, uh, I'll be there and then you'll, we'll discuss, what we need to discuss afterwards, but, uh, still, of course, to the county student, we, the wrestling family at Robbinsville, considering, family of the student, one of the requests at the wrestling facility to name after, the dreamer, designer, builder, and founder of the facility, Todd Oden. For many years, Todd Oden had the idea and dreams that wrestling facilities of Robbinsville High School, be not only one of the best in North Carolina, but also the nation. His desire was not for himself, but for the wrestlers of this story program to have the opportunity, to train in their own state-of-the-art facility. In 2010, his dream came to fruition. Todd, within countless hours, seeing that every detail was tended to, he was there at every step of the way, from the site grading, erection of the building, painting of the walls, to collecting all organized, collecting and organizing all interview, as you see, as you walk through the facility. Todd was a part of all, of it all. This facility, this program is what it is today because of the vision and efforts of Todd Oden. It should be no surprise that Todd only, not, not only guided this facility from dream to reality, but that he also, he was also an extremely successful coach. One of the most successful in the entire state during his tenure to handle the program. During Todd's first eight years of being head coach at Robbinsville, he tripled participation in the sport. Coach Oden was Smoky Mountain Conference Coach of the Year for 16 years. He was named Western North Carolina Coach of the Year in 2008, 17, 18, and 19. He was also named the North Carolina 1A Coach of the Year in 2008 and 2017. Lastly, Coach Oden was the North Carolina All-Star Team Coach in 2019 and 2022. The impact he has had, the impact he's had as head coach has ever been, as he coached 96 individual state qualifiers, 43 state placers, and 21 state champions. I hope it's clear as to what Coach Oden has meant to this program and sport wrestling in general. This is no understatement. Todd is recognized in the wrestling community from one end of our state to the other. He's known for his passion for the sport of wrestling and how much he's helped the sport grow. Not only in Robbinsville, not only in the Smoky Mountain Conference, but the state of North Carolina. This is how Todd Oden, this is how Todd Oden will be recognized nationally in the coaching profession. It's an honor to request that the wrestling facility of Robbinsville High School be named after Coach Todd Oden. After the person who put in countless hours of blood, sweat, and tears, into making the Robbinsville Wrestling Program, one of the top programs in the state, with a top training facility in the state. Todd is clearly deserving of this honor, and I hope, we hope, we can do just that. On him, I don't in his name, on the facility that he did it. And, uh, with the letters of support, uh, the one that really struck a chord with me is the one from Coach Harris and, uh, and Eka. And, uh, we got, uh, there's letters of support from the Eastern Band, the Cherokee Union, which Todd is, uh, is now in, put in as a member. We've got, uh, we've got the letters of support from the Grand Star. There's a, there's a statement in there from Kelly Shapler. She is, uh, she's the director of wrestling operations at Oklahoma State University. Uh, got heartfelt, what I consider a heartfelt letter of support from, uh, Coach Linger at Allegheny. How Todd has helped him, early on in his career. And how, and what you would, with all that, and what you would make. Because I think the world of Coach Todd Oden. He is, uh, he is, for whatever reason, he has, uh, many years ago took a life in the military. And, uh, now, we, and we should see here, his accolade is standing by himself, why don't you get it? There's, uh, especially in the, the small schools, there's, uh, not many in the state who can, that can either, hold a candle to what Todd has done. But what Todd has done in the lives of men, uh, that now graduate and gone on, my son doing one of them, is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, an extreme, very good attribute for Todd. Uh, there, I, I wish I had more statements because there's three or four of them that told me that Todd Oden saved their lives, you know? And, you know, in the coaching profession, we, we, we hope that's the case, and that's, that's kind of a lot of the, lot of the, uh, that goes with, that goes with the job. You know, you coach youth sports in, in middle school, Coach Nelson, you know, there's people that you, you affect, you know? The thing that about Coach Oden is that, uh, the wrestling facility, and, uh, there's character, that you were sitting in, and all that, thing about, say, that. So, you correct me if there's anything that, uh, I'm mistaken or misunderstood, but, Todd, uh, Todd brings, uh, the, the running with materials, and taking part of them. Uh, he was, actually started the rating for the building that he set, the Skinsphere and Bullbunch, you know? And, uh, uh, and with the help of Grand County Schools and, and what Mr. Prenger was involved with, made it kind of fruition, but, uh, night, 2023, August the 1st. That building, steel, I put my letter in, see if I can? There's a museum, if you've not seen, I urge you to come by and look at just what, you don't need to come right now because we need to do some, uh, some cleanup, you know? But I urge you sometime, if you've not been through it, you need to come look at it. And, uh, we tried to contact Barry Davis, who's, uh, works with Iowa, University of Iowa Wrestling Program, that's good friends with, uh, with Todd. Eight years ago, he came, and I was there, and he said, there's only two of them, college, uh, programs that have been named this nice. And my letter, and I put it, Lil' O Robbinsville. And he's straight, and I should be knowing that he has a dream. Or, you know, saying is, get out of the way and watch it go, or get right over, put it together, that's, that's, that's the way he is, but, uh, I just think it's, it's, uh, it's very important. To name the facility out of there. I'm not requesting what, how it should be named, you know, I know that Todd Oden Wrestling Facility, Todd Oden Wrestling Building, you know, but, uh, I'm trying to bring that to earth, you know, so, to, to.
How does the building now?
It was built in 2010, it was finished in 2010, rather.
Any questions?
See, we've got several letters of support from people, uh, here in Robbinsville, around the state, and, uh, the state nation. Thank you for.
Start taking in your homework, back to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Ms. Davis, Town of Robbinsville Sewer Easement.
A grant to, uh, review a considerable portion of, uh, sewer lines and, the project has been going on, new grant process and then mapping and surveys. McGill Associates and Ashville's hand, and so, um, I was helping with easements and right of ways, about 17 entities, people who need some, and so that's, um, that's the gist of it, it's just new sewer lines. And it affects a portion, yet you need to approve it in, in order for it to be some.
You have it in your package, it's.
Yeah, it's good, yeah. There's also a portion of surveys connected to it, or attached to it, that shows exactly where the, the new sewer line will sit.
Well, given the, opportunities and challenges we've had with, um, some sewer issues on our campus, um, I have to say that I definitely would recommend, even opportunities to have some new sewer lines anywhere in the area.
And the Gill is requi, and your government, Gill's required to, return it properly to, proper condition, sealing, children, that kind of thing. So they're not going to come in and do construction without.
Which is, which is going to go? I got, yes. On campus, too. Right.
Right. If you look at. Stand in the lower right hand corner. It really doesn't, be a miraculous jump happening, sewer line, but where the cross, school property, it's in the lower lane, uh, area of the drawing.
I really think it's down below the old garage, the corner of the main street, uh, and, uh, 439. I think it just crosses the corner down there, is that right? I don't know, you know, it's. It's crossing, it's barely crossing the road.
Is that all you have, Ms. Davis?
It is.
Do I have a motion to approve, uh, the Town of Robbinsville Sewer Easement to McGill? Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Waldru, technology acceptable use policy.
Okay, so, this year there is no change again, so I'm bringing it to you to reaffirm so we can say, and, yeah, there's E-Reg, Musac, and federal grants if we gain, you know, and all that stuff. So, as of right now, there are no changes, so we just need to reaffirm, say it's, deal policy is still being used.
Were you just going to give, like, there are, there may not have been involved last year.
I will, but it is. So the technology acceptable use policy is an agreement that anybody that uses our technology has to sign, whether you're a staff member or a steward. If you don't sign it, you're not allowed to use it. And you are agreeing to, uh, to use our resources, to get on the internet, connect to the outside world, and acceptable, right? So, this policy goes over, uh, uh, use of the school technology, like the devices and all that, it's, uh, it goes over FERPA policies, it goes over SIPA policies, it goes over, uh, uh, child control, you know, anything like that. It, it's saying that we, we are using the filtering system to protect our children, and it is your responsibility to use it responsibly. And if you don't do it responsibly, then you can have, especially if the student or staff, uh, it, it, you know, you can have the devices taken away from you, you can, you can lose your, uh, rights to use it, uh, and, uh, be prosecuted, you have no privacy when you're on our network, and it's, it's, so, so. So, I mean, it just, it's just very detailed, and. It goes along with the Internet Protection Acts that we had to add to it before, that added it to it. Uh, as of right now, there's no any changes, the state hasn't required any changes, there'll be some stuff coming up later, that everyone will have to work on, but as of right now, we're still, so. Okay, any questions?
Do I have a motion to, uh, renew the technology acceptable, acceptable use policy? Do I have a second? All in. Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Knight, facilities update.
Administration already made this, that job very easy for me. The only other major, um, transition we have done with somewhere is we're originally backyard preschool, downhill, to, uh, building adjacent to a kid's place, so it'll now be a kid's place classroom two, just ours, I'll bet on it. But, uh, and she's, she's going to join us. But, uh, so, maintenance has worked very hard to, uh, to get that ready, and they're in the process of moving into that this week, getting it set up, because a lot of you, many state childcare lines, and we'll be on site next week to, uh, to get that up with the, and some of their kids. And the main reason that was moved was because there's very low parking out here, so they're having to move a bus up here a couple of times, a couple, three times a day. You've got littles that are getting out of the vehicle, and there's a parking situation where big ones used to look at the little kids. Uh, there's no spaces when parents come to pick it up. So, uh, we've made a decision for safety purposes mainly, until line ends, and that they can make up, you know, really a big goal, we'd have all three of our preschool classrooms, under one roof, so they can share resources and facilities and, and those kind of things, so, uh, that's a, that's a big, at this point, you know, not going to have the, the, the facility, but down the road, future planning, that really does need to happen for the, for the, uh, really, you know, enrichment front. But, uh, they've worked really hard, it's going to be Tina Thatcher's classroom, and she's been down there working, uh, all those ladies and gentlemen, they're all working really hard, so. That's only another big construction that's going on, that, you know, I'm aware of.
Any update on that property that they talked about?
Uh, we, we have looked at some property, but it's, it's private property, as I was, might understand, not for sale. We, we are, we're investigating, so we're always thinking of responsible board, it's always looking for opportunities for growth, and that, that is a piece of property, with, you know, a five-mile radius, that, that might be an opportunity if, if at some point, wherever for that.
Personnel, Ms. Knight.
Okay, so I'll renew a, a host of personnel, uh, during class session, we'll be able to, we'll come back with a class session.
Ms. Davis, board of pastors. And these are first briefs, is that correct?
On the first one, graduation requirements, I spoke to David briefly, uh, before the board meeting. Uh, what you have before you, there we, that, that changed in the first reading, is some military, um, exceptions. So, basically, um, what's in here are the requirements of, uh, children of military families, we already addressed it, and prior change, but there are just more changes. Uh, the lack, that there is a coming, uh, some general things, okay? I believe if you go to page five or six, um, the alternate graduation form, I believe that addresses it, but I want David and the committee to look at that. With new military exceptions, um, do we have it in here for US military children, and as well as that, this children? The other change, and the committee needs to look at it, um, is, I'm not so sure it's changed, is the curriculum. And at this time, um, there's a minimum curriculum required by the state, 22 hours. We have six local hours, I need to make sure that the boards are compliant with what they, what the General Assembly has just rewritten and followed. Well, in their la- last meeting, they're coming back, I think August 7th, but they have rewritten some of the, uh, course requirements. So I want to make sure that's in compliance, and I'll get with the committee for our next board meeting. So, but at least military is in US.
Are that, are those not, are those, are those not in here on page three?
They are on here.
The changes are in there?
No, 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 I didn't change it, because I want to make sure that.
Ellen, do you know if they added a computer science requirement for graduation?
This was.
Our high school?
Yes. There's some classes that we currently offer that will, will work, like Adobe, will count as a computer science.
Right, they kept the, the.
And that would be for incoming freshmen?
That would be, be up for whatever, it probably is not, may not be this group, it may be next year's freshman, that's when it starts, I don't know, but, I mean, she will, and she'll get a note the day she.
They're changing some requirements at the time you enter, whether you were in ninth grade before this year, or after that year, and then they're allowing some equivalency. So, I think that the committee needs to, hammer this out, we'll do that before our next, our next meeting, make sure our course requirements are compliant, and I'll get, I'll get with the latest. Okay, that's graduation. All right, next, um, 3620s, extracurricular activities. The changes that have occurred in here, um, are somewhat substantial. If you look down on, at B, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association no longer requires 85% of daily attendance. That is something you can modify. They used to require it, but they no longer require it. So, you need to look at B, if you want to keep 85%, um, do you want this to go to committee two? There've been some changes in here on extracurricular, and it's sports, it's not, uh, I mean, it includes football, basketball and all, so, but, you're no longer required that by the, um, Athletic Association.
Well, yes.
Is there no?
There is no, there is no daily attendance required on, on, with Carolina High School Athletic Association.
But you.
The requirement is only that students pass three of the four classes in order to be eligible. So, I mean, with our attendance policy that we have in place, which is approved by the board, that only allows students to miss five days within a semester, we, I mean, we're, we've got a very strong and strict attendance policy that affects every kid and all the athletes. So basically, we only look at their grades to see if they're eligible, whether or not, okay, that's right.
So you may want to put in here then, at B, instead of, you no longer do the 85%, that would be like, 80%, or usual attendance policy applies to extracurricular activities. And you've got to remember, they did not take out, um, extracurricular activities, and it's elastic athlete, it's all a privilege, not a requirement. So, that, that, that's in there, hey? So, but, um, if you want to modify B1, say, um, to give, instead of the 85%, you launch your current attendance policy. Let me know. Let me know, so when we, when I revise these for the final, for, that I have that in here, okay?
That's good.
Okay, now, on B, there's still a B1. Right now, students in the sixth grade are eligible or not, you have to decide if they're eligible or not eligible, but except for, for tackle football, there's no sixth grade that can participate in tackle football. So students in sixth grade are eligible, or, um, are eligible for inter-scholastic athletics, accepting, uh, tackle football, or are not eligible. So, you need to decide on that.
And that is a decision that's already been made with our conference, because, um, most schools have a junior high, among the teams, we do not have a junior varsity, which is.
No, that's wrong. We have a junior high.
Other ones have junior varsity, yes, whatever, yeah. Right.
We technically don't have JV football, because we allow 17 to 19 graders to play at junior high. And so there's all these new conferences in the state that are like that, and that's the Smoky Mountain Conference, which we're part of, and then the, uh, And then the uh there's the Western Highlands Conference, which is math and mutual, mountain heritage, that conference. That's the only two conferences that have junior high football. And they actually, we were the first ones to do it and done it for years, it's all we've ever done. And they actually copied us and went to the state and asked to do it. So works real well for us, but we did not allow sixth graders to play. They require them to play either B J mine or I don't know what B J mine should be to six grade, but that's where they would be playing.
And so the other conferences that last six, for example, they don't have a junior varsity.
So most middle schools across the state have a sixth grade team and then they have a seventh, eighth grade team. Okay, and junior varsity would be nine and tenth grade and varsity eleven and twelve. And then obviously we have what's called a eight-quarter rule, so a kid can dress, you know, as a tenth grader with a JV team and then play also on Friday night with varsity name. But they don't do that, it's protocol, they're football, so.
Next. We need that, that needs to be be in the passing. Okay, I'm still on B one, they put a line in B one. Okay. This, this is optional too. What's come, what is proposed is paragraph that a student participating in high school inter- interstational athletics may participate only on the team consistently with gender on student's birth certificate. Unless otherwise committed to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules and rules. The North Carolina Athletic Association has approved, they have the standing committee called the Gender Identity Committee. If you leave this in here, uh the second part, unless otherwise committed, the High School Athletic Association, the student would go to their standing gender committee and be read and either be approved or not approved. The High School Athletic Association is um sometimes I think they're helpful and other times they interject themselves in all the regulation with gender identity or sex certificate or birth, but anyway, that's how the regulation is coming, but you can delete the part from right now. You can leave it, a student participating in high school athletics may participate only on the team consistently with gender on student's birth certificates.
You can do that. If we if we not have girls kick around, that's all thing, right?
The girl can play football. This is talk, this is talking about, so any sport that's not offered to girls and boys, uh a girl, so a girl can be on the football team. A girl can be on the wrestling team, we don't have girls wrestling, okay? But this is talking about a a female playing on or a male playing on the volleyball team.
If we have.
Or a male playing on the.
We don't have a male.
Well, under title line, we don't.
It'd be like a male playing on a girls' basketball.
Yeah, I feel like a male playing.
No, we offer girls and boys basketball, but we don't offer girls and boys volleyball.
Yeah. This was the issue that was, this was the issue within our phone, I asked you.
So you want us to take that part now?
You're asking me if I would be.
I mean, with that.
I'll state it out in public, yes, I would be more comfortable if uh you know, girls do not or boys do not play on girls' teams.
For right now?
For right now, because you don't know what's coming down too. For right now, it's just, you can still use the versatile. Then we can, for right now, we can delete unless they go to the gender identity committee. Because I already want to take that, so. Do you want this to go to the meeting too?
I think this needs to be a committee.
Yes.
Okay, this is a common head topic.
Yeah, this, the girl that I was seeing down is still suffering from the hit to the face.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, um number two, this is student initiated, not organized activity, but student initiated, non-curricular related student groups at the secondary level. You still have the requirement that it has, it can be on school grounds during non-instructional time, okay? The other important thing is school employees may not promote, lead, or participate in student initiated activity, however, the school can have supervision there. Have an employee because.
Can you give an example?
Student initiated.
Why?
It's it's non-curricular.
S D A.
They call it the. Solitaire. And um but usually it's more controversial than that, but it's the card club and there's non-curricular. Course of study.
The heart scheme, you're really intense.
And regulating content of speech for the meetings other than supervision, um it's not permitted, so that's not an option. But you've got to remember that school employees, and that's what we've seen actually work across the state, is it's a school employee promoting or leading a non-curricular activity and participating in student initiated club. So that um that's where our employees need to know that it's okay, but they they can't lead. Okay. The only incident, the only expenses that a school is required to give for a student, non-curricular club, is incidental cost. You cannot spend any public funds on behalf of the club, travel, overnight accommodations, that kind of thing. So you can't have the non-curricular curriculum club involving these public funds. And then to give a definition, if you look at, um I think that might be on two. Number two, B two. It's more of what um it's what a non-curricular related student group is based on if it was a curriculum related. So it's sort of a opposite definition, but it still entails that the subject matter's not taught. That it's not required as part of course completion and there's no course curriculum. Then under special circumstances, um the special circumstances come again, that's all, that's all new. It's a broader definition of waiving all deadlines. If noticed it's required for participation in a class and sports, that's all way, if you can show that um you are a military, military related. It's just basically waiving any quotas. And then they have to complete a course when they may be a middle alderman or maybe got half credit for it, the prior school, you can't keep them out of extracurricular activities. Okay, number three is important, athletic participation by home school students. Again, right now, you have an option. You can either have um in number three, again, this is from High School Athletic Association saying, this is a criteria, it's three, A through H, okay? That, this is what the Athletic Association is recommending. You can omit all those requirements, you can afford, because the Athletic Association is just saying, this is how we look at um home school students participating in athletics. So read those carefully, the A, A because some of them may be good.
Is this, is this new, Ms. Davis?
Or even omit this enumerated list and just state that um it's an importance with your own enrollment requirements.
I I think it's important, understanding that for C N S is not to be in the admitted, it's home school students who are duly enrolled. So and then what you're saying is, then you have some flexibility with what you choose to put underneath that.
Right, yeah. And these were what is recommended by the Athletic Association, or you can just say your own which may not be all of these.
So I I think the way that I read this is, they say they're in addition of dual enrollment, so you have that for your academics. And then these, just for the audience sake, are things like, they must present their home school card.
Yes.
And a transcript, a technical record, evaluations, proof that you've been enrolled in a registered home school for three hundred sixty-five days.
Yes.
Any kind of national standardized achievement test results within the last year, class schedules, uh uh and those kind of things.
In addition.
In additions, in addition to the dual enrollment.
To your dual enrollment.
So for clarification, the dual enrollment means that they're enrolled at least half the time in our school system.
That's correct.
So they they remain a student, my 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 understanding is they remain a student of the home school. But they're also a student of the high school. So the credit, if those who graduate, they graduate from the home school. But the high school credit from Rockville High School account for their graduation from the home school.
Um then besides what classes they take, is dual enrollment.
Well, uh.
Core classes is true.
It would be.
It would have to be core classes.
That's what we, yes, when we asked and asked about this, we told them they have to be in core classes. And then if they choose, you know, want something else, they can do that in addition, but it would have to be in core classes. And maybe if they say that, it can fall.
And core classes, they but still, they went through.
Or at least.
Years get, would you still.
Well, they wouldn't be a graduate from our school.
That's right, that's right.
Their home, that that goes back to the home school, they graduate from home school.
And they get the credit though.
They get the credit in our high school.
Division of Carolina for high school. Okay.
So I mean, I'll just tell you, my concern I have is if a student came in and thinks, well, I just want to do dual enrollment in tri- family, I don't really want to take classes here at high school. Me, that doesn't work because that gives us absolutely zero control of what that student's doing on a daily basis and and they need to be in our classrooms in front of our pictures if they're going to come to home school to participate in sports, so.
Well, I would think that it looks to me like that it would be important that they bond with their team.
Absolutely.
Classes with them.
Yeah.
And you know, if a coach needs to sit or a coach needs to talk to them, that would be important.
I have a time with their long campus when they're available.
Exactly.
Under it.
And it's always been, it's a tough call because of the requirements on your home student body before you have some privilege. May actually to have a taken, the student has to have taken the necessary steps uh for that athletic participation. So it's been a long, it's been around a long time how to accommodate some students with extracurricular activity. And remember, it's still a privilege.
Yeah.
Uh David added that to the committee was too. Okay, children of military families, um forty fifty. It has substantially changed. I'll say forty fifty is been completely re-written. And it's flexibility is what it's looking at. And if you will go to B, uh one is definitions. One A and one B is where I want you to look, children of military families. Well, there's a host of, and that's been completely re-written. It's it's much broader how military children, military family is fine. But all the accommodations that the school must give for military children is triggered by only meeting one of those new four. So you have four items there. The tech, what we call the test to trigger all the requirements you need to do for military children. It's just one of those, not all of them. And I I think that's important, we should be, it's it's something, as we say now, it's just one, but it's not and and and, so. Take our attention to that. And if you go on, it gives all the definitions, even accommodating an inactive men, men, that's changed, the definition there has changed. So it's all changed. Forty-one hundred is a requirement for initial entry. It's it's had some significant changes. I don't know that that needs to go um to the committee, um but it applies to eligibility for initial entry applies not only to biological children, but foster care and homeless. I was just going to stress that's been in there for a while, but it is homeless and foster care. And at the end, you tie them to entry, initial entry, A, you only need to be one of the criteria. It's no longer and and and, so it's just one of the criteria. If you look over that, both of that needs to go with initial entry. Then forty-one ten admission and a couple requirements. I think if you go to, you know, we've talked about the eye exam for a long, long time. The eye exam has only been controversial, but it is still in, and so, but it is now you can no longer exclude a student attending solely for the failure to obtain a comprehensive eye exam. It's still in there, they just need it in your efforts to have it done, but that can no longer be utilized for exclusion when there's not a comprehensive eye exam and all that's explained here. So it would be good to read. We need to. Then discretionary admission, this is completely re-written, you need to look very carefully at that. And what what discretionary admission is done is gone reversing these others. It's now, it's now conjunct, I mean, disjuncted. You only have to meet certain requirements and you can have discretionary admission. There is an application process, there's a review process, it's still done on a annual basis. So so that hasn't changed. But But there's some more requirements that, it's not being done for athletic participation. So, that, that is discretionary admission. Okay. And that would be the first reading, and then on the graduation policy, the extracurricular, and... I think we're, I'll look at those with the committee, we have to explore the grant policy.
Ms. Madison, before you went in on each of the data requirements. As, as a part of the basic requirements, saying you want to, there's a lot of law. A lot of walking around there?
Religious exemptions and things like that.
And is that, is it getting easier, or is it...
There's not a lot of students that...
Do you have a lot?
Not a lot. For instance, like, I think they're required as a senior to have the second meningitis vaccine. And the majority of our students do go, go take that.
How did I do that religious exemption? Is that the only thing, the religious exemption?
There's that, or I think there's a medical exemption that they, yeah, there's several, three ways around on that stuff. But we have, we have very, very few students study that.
I've used it, and it's just write out a little letter, you know, the statute, it doesn't...
That's it, yeah, that's it.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
You can ask, let me ask a question?
Oh, sure.
A couple of months ago, I put out that thing about doing a policy for, in form of consent. And I did type that up, like you guys told me to. And then I just typed it along the way. I emailed it to Pam, and she gave me some feedback. Take the first two, one has each one, and we just take two. And this is what I typed up. Oh, I need to, that's the other one, we need to do that in policy committee. Yeah, I wanted to get input, though, from, because, well, because I asked Pam. So, I felt like I need to include the other members, and if they got an opinion. And that means all y'all, too. Because I, I take principals' opinions high, high, high on my list. So, if we got opinions, I will be glad to give these policies to you that I can help with. But basically, all of this is parents make the decisions.
Could you, could you email and, email me and we'll do that in...
We have our meeting, we will look at it.
Yes, and I will do that. I love the comment on what Pam said to me, it was a benefit of everybody. I got some, this one just gave me a ton of paperwork, and I hold on to it. All down options is what I was kind of having a headache about, right? Because, you know, I know Pam's got the teeth. But, here's an example of what Pam showed. There's things that we need, people to take. And parents may not say yes, parents may say no, which would mean by my policy, if they don't, the kids doesn't go on. So, I wanted to be above board and just say, there are things that, off down options and waiting on parents to, to put their permission in. You'd have to, you'd have to miss classes like this one here. And you know what? They got abstinence. I was reading all of this, they got abstinence in the, in the teaching of this, which I think is good. And this, this is for the benefit of my voters, and the people who talk to me about this stuff. And also because I'm including you guys, and I wanted you to understand what I'm coming from. Because I'm taking into consideration what Pam said. People will not consent to have their kids in classes sometimes, what they really do need. But after praying about it, talking about it, thinking about it, not questioning people, it still comes back to the same thing. What's right is always right. And parental is what I, I believe that parents should make the decision. And just on a side note, it kind of leaves the liability off of a board to be offending people and, and going beyond what parents want. They want, you know, their wants for their child. Let them decide. So, that's my take. And I'm going to wait until next week, Ms. Davis, to send you my policies in the, in the form of an actual, you know, formal, here, I'm giving you these policies, I'd like to see them in. Because I'm giving these other three members a chance, and any of you to say something to me that you've read my policy that I wrote up, and you think it should say, or, I, I know two's better than one, three's better than two, four's better, you know. I, I'm willing to take everybody's opinions. But the next week, like we said, Ms. Davis, I will hand it into your means, and I will do that. There, you guys actually have a right to say what you agree with.
Okay.
You can just send me a copy of the consent.
I, I maybe, I get me, there was two pieces of paper, and I hope there was only one, but it...
No, I wrote two policies because it's certain. The survey didn't incident, made me write another policy, but that was also your actual hand. As you said, I want to see those things in, in packets first, so that we...
But we talked about that in, just seeing the surveys and packs first. But, Mr. Madison, this was washed up. I did say, you know, at the beginning, you reset so many papers off. And you, you know how parents can be a little bit passive sometimes when they see the videos, sign these, they say, go back to school. Do they really take the time to, to read and see what's out?
Sure they don't.
And we can change that. But I'm saying, that's just a consideration that we, we, I thought, oh, Miss Davis, I said, that's just something that parents... And, you know, all these other things we have, like our curriculum that Tiffany Millsop uses, parents know that has a mirror. It's beauty. I mean, we let parents know it's available for you to look at. And I did not, I didn't, when I did parent advice, I did not set my permissions to public, because I started that unit. And it went on directly, it sent back to me directly, that's...
I like that response, although, may I make a note, I'll just add a note in here of an actual event. My granddaughter came home one day from, from her time at after school, and she was so excited about me signing a document that if she didn't get it signed, it wouldn't, I don't know what the incentive was, but you guys have an incentive here for her to do it. She's just 10. And she was so on top of that because of the incentive. So, I'm saying, there are very important things that you want people to take the class, then the incentive works. Because Bobby, you know, what, first thing happened when Bobby came through the door is that she went after her, too. She went after me and her. Get this signed. Kids are motivated by a incentive. We need to go that way.
That is, yeah, that is mistaken, I guess, committee needs to look at.
Yes, I thank you, I appreciate that, yes.
So, in order for me to get the minutes on this correctly, am I just saying that this will be going back to committee for review and to determine if it's going to be accepted as a policy? Is that the correct way to put this in minutes?
Committee, so, if it...
And that the board was given the opportunity to look.
Okay.
At that point, that would have been our, you know, that's a great, a slot.
Maybe you'll make record adjustments.
Yes, do I have a motion to go in closed session?
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute 143-31A111, print C's three, print C's three, at 143-318.11, print C's C. I move the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, Attorney for the Grand County Board of Education, which advice comes within the review of the attorney client privilege. This advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, print C's C. I move the Grand County Board of Education going to closed session for the purpose of considering personnel managers as defined in and allowed by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, print C's eight, print C's six, and the North Carolina General Statute 115C-321.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You don't like Ms. Wiggins? My fingers are flying.
Yes, do I, do I need a motion to amend, that's my fault. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda and add H naming of the wrestling building? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now.
Okay. I would recommend for cross-country head coach Emily Ware.
Do I have a motion to approve Emily Ware as cross-country coach?
I salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend Jessica Ware as assistant coach for cross-country.
Do I hear a motion to approve Jessica Ware as assistant coach for cross-country? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend Zane Wachacha for a volunteer.
Do I have a motion to approve Zane Wachacha for a volunteer?
I still move that.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend a list of bus drivers, and there's a large list of those, and I'll get those to you, all the board members have them.
Do I have a motion to approve? All right, Ms. Knott and Mr. Allison have to recuse themselves because they are bus drivers. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Yes, we have a motion.
Do I have a second? And all in favor? All right?
You made the motion, you seconded it?
Yes. Read it, please. Do I have a motion now to approve the list of bus drivers and subs for the 2023-24 school year?
Yes, you have a motion. Mm-hmm.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? You can...
You did.
You have to be on form, test period.
All right, I, I vote for it.
Ms. Wiggins, did you follow up with us?
I am.
Okay. I recommend the list of instructional substitutes that you have received. And I'm going to state that this is just a partial list, we'll get the updated list, you can hear more under the professional training center.
I move that we approve this partial substitute, instructional substitutes for, obviously, the rest.
Second.
All in favor? I didn't ask for a motion, but that's...
I know, I'm just... For the school resource officer position, I recommend Joshua Reed.
Do I hear a motion to approve Joshua Reed for the school resource officer?
I've done the motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
For positions of elementary teachers, Taylor Akendo, Amy Barnett.
Do I have a motion to approve Taylor Akendo and Amy Barnett as elementary teachers?
I move we approve Taylor and Amy as elementary teachers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend the following Americor workers, Patience Smith-Lawes, Alicia Farley, and Casey Cook.
Do I have a motion to approve Patience, Smith-Lawes, Alicia Farley, and Casey Cook as Americor workers?
I, I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
I recommend the following Giro tutors, Karen Lael, Brittany Tencher, Crystal White, and Angela Tyler.
Do I have a motion to approve Karen Lael, Crystal White, Brittany Tencher, and Angela Tyler as Giro tutors?
I salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend the following child nutrition part-time workers, and I'm going to go ahead and apologize, I'm going to slurr these names. Alyssa Usery, Tracy Nebergall, and Deborah Britton.
Do I have a motion to approve Alyssa Usery, Tracy Nebergall, and Deborah Britton as child nutrition part-time workers?
I still move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I recommend that you employ Marjorie Dale in the position of child nutrition substitute.
Do I have a motion to approve Marjorie Dale as child nutrition substitute?
I know we have Marjorie Dale as child nutrition.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay? Is there any more?
Well, we need to wrestling.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the naming of the wrestling building after Todd Odom?
So, so I need to make the recommendation based on board policy.
Oh, okay.
Ninety-three thirty, and then components. I do believe that the components of that facility naming policy have been met. And I would make the recommendation to name the wrestling facility after Todd Odom.
Motion's in that we name the wrestling building after Todd Odom?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Could you tell me who made that second, please?
Well, it's going to be one of these two.
I, I think it's a chip character.
And I didn't say, are there any opposed to that? Okay? All right, Ms. Knott?
Yes, so, the next Board of Education meeting will be on September the fifth at 10:00 a.m., a regularly scheduled meeting. And the only other announcement that I have is, you had requested a few meetings ago that the board purchase a subscription with the North Carolina School Board Association for a video subscription for confessional development, not just for board members, but also it would be available to staff members. There's several topics that would be of interest to, to several, I mean, from, you know, budget finance, all of the communication, board policy, search and seizure, federal employment laws, public rights, parental rights. There's some things that are coming up in August. The pitfalls of social media for school system employees, I think that would be something that we could use for sure. Risk management basics, sexual harassment and grooming, what a school employee needs to know. And then there's other things coming up, you know, like special education, supervisory evaluations, roles and responsibilities. So, I, I do think that that will be a, a good purchase. Today, as of August 1st, they, they were releasing the information, so that should go to Ms. Klon. And when, when we receive that and receive the login and password information, we will pass that along, obviously, to board members, we also should have said. And then the staff will be able to, I'm assuming that, as the board members, you will be able to get credit for the series. Is what, I, I'm assuming, now, I don't know that, that's something we can find out, I don't know. But it says that, according to what Ms. Klon, when she talked this week, you choose the videos, make your name and email address, and you'll get credit for watching. So, I don't know if that counts as board credit, but certainly for staff, we can award CUs for that once we receive the certificate.
The lady at the meeting said, you might want to double check with her, and I wonder if there's a special step extra we'd have to do for that, but maybe not.
Well, we'll find all that out, I'm sure, when we get the actual instructions available, then I'll...
Is there a cost for that?
Yes, y'all paid fifteen hundred dollars, I believe. Yeah, for that.
Yeah.
We do.
Not on the table, no.
We're just going to hold back and we'll check. But I think overall, if people would use that, it would be... Let me just read this at the bottom, it says, completion of one of our trainings will go toward door as a board's twelve hours of training required annually as a school board member. So, I just know where that is at the bottom, so, yeah.
Yeah. Before you got that, I didn't block red, it was there.
No, it's in the, Mr. editor, we'll let you do it.
If I go back to sleep after I get here, you can't judge me, okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?